Welcome, everybody, calling the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of August 11, 2021 to order. Ms. Pinyard, could you please do the roll call?
Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Ron Heberlein.
Here.
Jerry Greenfield.
Here.
Aaron Woods. Brienne Trusinski. Olive Gallagher. Has Mr. Woods shown present or...? We can just add him to the record.
Commissioner Woods, can you hear us? This is Miranda Bates, planning director. I have asked for you to be able to speak and also tried to promote you to panelist. Please let me know. Oh, I'm getting a chat from somebody else. I think maybe this one needs to be unmuted. Commissioner Woods, can you hear us? Oh, he's just getting promoted. Aha. It appears that I may have fixed the problem. But we've lost Commissioner Woods. So I will let you know if he joins.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is a time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight, and we do not have a public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now. And raising your hand also includes raising your hand in Zoom if you, you know, doing, attending the meeting through Zoom. Do we have any, anybody wanting to talk?
Chair Mesba, we do not have any citizens on the Zoom meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Consideration of July 14, 2021, Planning Commission minutes that were distributed with your packets. Are there any corrections, additions, subtractions? I have a subtraction on page 11 of 14. One, two, three, four, five, six, six bullet down. The sentence about the garage has two, is a double negative. One of those negatives need to come out. That is all. Anybody else?
I believe that we accept the minutes as amended by Chair Mesba.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Gallagher. Everybody is okay with it? My consent, it seems like. Very good. Approved as amended. We move into work session, and I will hand it over to Planning Director as one of your duties. You're, I assume you're still doing that, are you?
Thank you, Chair Mesba. So our first work session this evening is on the Town Center Streetscape Plan. I am working to promote the consultant to being a panelist, so hopefully that will happen shortly. Just a quick note on this agenda item. As you know, the direction to do this project stemmed from the Town Center plan that was adopted in 2019, in that one of the main elements was harmonious design and ensuring that design of the public realm really supported the type of mixed-use walkable town center that the community envisions. So this project is critical for us in achieving that, and it's really critical for implementation of that plan and ensuring that what gets constructed, that there's clear guidance both on the city capital projects as well as on the private development projects as the Town Center builds out, what we expect that private realm to look like and how the buildings interface with the sidewalk and the sidewalk with the street itself. So as you know, there's been public input on this plan up to date. We took a few different themes out to the community and got input on the themes and the design elements that were preferred. With that information, we've had several work sessions with all of you and with City Council to get more input on the details of those design elements. So tonight, we are bringing to you a draft of the Streetscape Plan, and we are looking for direction that, or confirmation that the direction that we're headed is both understood and supported. Any final feedback you might have, especially related to the investment levels? We know you had a lot of questions about that at the last work session. So hopefully, the document you have in your packet has helped clarify some of that, and we welcome any feedback or input you have. But I know the project team has some specific questions for you and wants to provide you with updates on what has changed since the last time you saw it. So with that, I'm going to introduce to you Associate Planner Philip Bradford.
The Zoom will not let me start my video.
Okay.
Is that normal?
Yes, it is normal.
Is there a video or share your screen?
I think I have to do it. Hold on a second. His screen, there's a presentation up, which is, I assume, what you want up.
Yeah, that, I think, is working just fine.
You want like your picture?
Right.
Your smile. Okay.
There we go. This is...
Does that work?
Yeah, this is working how it normally does. All right, got it. All right. Good evening, Chair Mesba, Planning Commissioners. My name is Philip Bradford, Associate Planner with the City of Wilsonville. Also with us tonight is Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, and he is available for any questions that you may have after the presentation. Tonight, we're excited to share the draft at the Wilsonville Town Center Streetscape Plan with you prior to the public hearing. Last time... There we go. Last time that this went before you, there were a few questions and feedback items that we've worked to address since then. So at that last work session, we shared the proposed investment levels for the different street typologies and shared different design elements with you. And while there was resounding support for the proposed Streetscape designs and the individual elements, there was some confusion and additional direction from many of you to clarify where the investment levels would be within Town Center, and I will be sharing how we've addressed those tonight and also going over the differences of the different investment levels now that we have renderings for all three, and additional renderings and cross-sections were included in the packet that I'm not sharing in this presentation. So the first one is the lowest tier, which is the standard investment. This is a standard local street that has separated bike lanes. There are two local street options, one with on-street bike lanes and one with protected. And the notable factor, or the notable distinguishing feature of the standard investment level is that it predominantly uses existing city design details and the, otherwise it follows the typical products that we've selected for Town Center. But you can see here the more curvilinear landscaping beds, as this rendering shows that beyond the crosswalk, it transitions to the signature investment level. Then the next investment level is enhanced, and the thing that sets this apart from the others is that there are pavers between the tree planting area and the pavement here, and you start to get more of the unique features that we're proposing within this. You can see the curvilinear benches here and the landscape beds. So those are different elements that set the enhanced apart. And then finally, this is the signature investment level. Here it's shown in the promenade, so you just have the cycle track, sidewalk area, and the stormwater features. And you can see that there's more custom seating, and you have the custom pavement that we discussed in the previous work session. And this unique design sets it apart from the other two. This is the slide that we shared in the previous work session, and this generated some confusion as we're showing the areas that we provided renderings for, but there were comments that stated that this doesn't really give the best clarity on what streets would be, which investment level, and it also left there to be some gray area, as in not every street was clarified. So to address that tonight, I've created a, the next slide that shows all these streets with investment levels designated. This isn't in the draft, but we will, we wanted to show what we're proposing as far as investment levels, and we will either include a graphic representation or a verbal representation of this image in the final document that goes for adoption. So here you can see that the Main Street is signature throughout Town Center, including the intersections with Town Center Loop and Wilsonville Road. Courtside, the east-west connecting street, is enhanced throughout the entire distance. You have the unique projects such as the promenade and the Park Place Extension also shown in signature. And then the local streets would predominantly be the standard investment level. And we would also like to include language in the final version of the plan that gives additional flexibility. If someone wanted to carry over a feature or a design element from a higher investment level as they transition to a standard street, that they would be able to do that if they wanted to. wanted to. Then, another aspect of the draft that may change between now and adoption is lighting. So the current draft that you see before you in your packet, the lighting selection had not been clarified. On this slide, I've included the fixture that we intended to move forward with throughout the entire process, which is the Rama shown on the right side of the slide. And at the City Council work session, we discussed the constraints with lighting. PGE has very specific products that they're pre-approved on their Option A list. And we, since we do not have a large storage facility as a smaller city, our Public Works cannot, does not have the capacity to store a custom fixture with spares for all of Town Center. All of our fixtures follow products that are approved on that list, so that if one needs to be replaced, they can immediately get one from PGE as they're in the facility somewhere in the Portland area and always in stock. And also, their staff is trained to work on the list of fixtures that they have been using on that list. So after working closely with PGE to refine what we can do that we believe works with the aesthetic of the Streetscape Plan, we've selected the Aurora fixture and the Hadco Pole that are shown on the left and center of this slide. And it's a much more traditional look than the rest of the Streetscape, but we are confined, or constrained rather, by a pretty limiting list. We nearly moved forward with the Westbrook fixture that can be seen in Frog Pond, which has fairly contemporary lines. However, that is being phased out. So this was our next best option. We, based on the direction we received from Council, are still going to pursue working with PGE to get a more contemporary fixture on that list. And we will include language in the Streetscape Plan that would, once there is, or if a more contemporary option becomes available, we would like that to be the lighting type used in the Streetscape Plan because this is what we feel comfortable moving forward with for adoption, but it's still not what we would have wanted for the plan. And we want to give us additional flexibility in the future to go with something that is more keeping with the rest of the look and feel of the design elements we've chosen for the plan. And we will continue to work with PGE to advocate for a more contemporary option for the lighting list that serves all of the jurisdictions in the PGE service area. And the last thing that may change in the draft plan between the public hearing is the street tree recommendations. We have a stormwater selection, which is circled in number one, an accent tree circled is number two, and then number three is the standard street tree. So we have recently begun, began reviewing the Urban Forest Management Plan, which contains street, specific street tree recommendations for Town Center. And staff would like to take the time between now and the final version of the Streetscape Plan to review the list in more detail and select out a few species that would work for the urban context, especially by cross-checking the trees that we've seen that fared poorly in the ice storm and in the heat waves to ensure that the most resilient species are chosen based on the most recent information we have on the ground with what we've seen so far. So there may be slight changes to the page in the draft on street trees between now and adoption, so I wanted to point that out. And with that, we can move on to discussion and questions. So the two questions we would like to ask you tonight are, do you identify any aspects of the Streetscape Plan that need edits or modifications? And are there any other key elements or considerations that should be included in the draft Streetscape Plan? And with that, Ben and I are able to answer any questions for us that you may have.
Should we start with questions? Go ahead.
I noted on the, the streetlights that the pole appeared to be of a different element or different color than the fixture. Are they going to match?
They will both be black.
I'll go. That's all right. Philip, could you go back to the slide that shows the, the street, proposed street layouts? Yep, that one.
This one?
Yep, okay. So where the promenade will connect up to the East Landing on the bridge, what is that intersection going to look like? Because you've got standard streets intersecting with the promenade, which is signature. Are the intersection, is that intersection going to be signature as well? Because it's not clear to me if that's the case or if it's just going to stop at the
I think one of the slides in here may help illustrate how that could potentially work. So the standard investment rendered here shows how a standard would interface with a signature. So I think that the left side of this does a good depiction on how they would work. That specific intersection would likely be determined by future development because that is by the Frye site. So I'm not sure if that would be a intersection or it would start where the property, like mid-property where the intersection would be standard, but then the promenade would begin. Based on how that is shown on the Town Center master plan, list of streets. So I guess that would sort of need to be determined exactly once we had a street cross-section and we'd work with the developer to come up with exactly how that'd look because that would be determined in, based on the development scenario of that property.
Okay. I guess what I want to make sure is that we don't have what I would say is going to be a signature East Landing and a signature promenade and then standard in the middle, kind of separating those two.
Commissioner Everline, just to clarify, by the landing, do you mean like the I-5 pedestrian bridge landing?
Yeah, the landing plaza area.
As this is currently shown, the, the streets around the Bridge Plaza would be standard. So that, I think the logic there is to let the features of the plaza themselves shine more and the streets would be standard around that. And also, on the Town Center Plan, it, from what I've seen from the I-5 Plaza project, it looks like there would be a public street to the north of the plaza, but here, there isn't a street outlined. But I don't know if that's just flexible based on future development and how the plaza
Will the promenade be a city-owned property? Got a city street in effect?
Long-term, the promenade, as called out in the Town Center Plan, is for that promenade to transfer ownership to the city and would be city-maintained over time.
So in, in that case, where does the city property, how, how far into the intersection would the city property extend?
Well, at this point, the promenade, it's, it's not a full street. So in terms of, I guess I'm not sure the, the question there. Any streets are going to be dedicated right away to the city, including these local streets that are penciled in on the Town Center Street Framework Plan. The promenade is expected to, it's, it was put in as a bubble diagram in the plan, as we recall, because we didn't have a specific alignment. The intent is for that promenade to connect all the way, both directions. So it would connect all the way to Main Street, and it would also connect to the, really to the cycle track that comes off of that landing, which I think is the reason for Commissioner Everline's question, is ensuring that there is a design functionality that is seamless between those two components.
Yes. Yeah, I didn't want to see a, a great piece, a standard, and then a grate and have that disconnect. And so as long as there's that connection so that it is seamless, I'm, I'm good. That's what I want to make sure that we have.
So I don't think it's clear at this point, based on where that promenade specifically ends up getting developed. Like if it's directly, if it comes directly out from where the street comes and it lands right at that intersection, almost like four corners, that will probably look different than if it's slightly south and there's some type of alignment where it connects with that north-south street and then comes up. And so I don't know that we know exactly what that intersection looks like. But you are going to see the Ped Bridge and Plaza designs tonight. So we can talk a little bit more about both, like internally as staff, before we bring this back in the final plan. Or if you have feedback, I'd love to hear the Commission's feedback on whether you want that intersection enhanced or signature in a way that lines up. I don't want to over, part of this is, there will be a specific design to that plaza, and so we don't necessarily want to encroach the design of the Streetscape into that plaza. But we do want to make that a seamless transition. So we could acknowledge that in some way as an important intersection as we get to that specific design. Or we could provide it with a designation in this plan. I see those as different alternatives that the Commission could provide some input on.
I would hope that, as a general principle, transitions from one grade to another would be, if not gradual, at least sensitive to the spirit of the, of the higher grade. Transition aside, this map on page 12 of the attachment shows a continuous green ribbon. And I think that's probably, that, that is not likely, right? Because there's existing streets there, and if anything, you're going to have basically a sidewalk, not really a promenade. So that the continuity that Commissioner Everline is looking for is shown in this map, but I don't know that it's, is realistic. Or maybe it is. But that's the confusion.
Yeah, I think, I think from my perspective, that's, that's what I have in my mind, is, is a seamless connection between the two. And this picture does not lend itself to that. And, and I think as long as we can have that idea in mind as we continue to progress through the design, I'm, I'm okay. It just doesn't feel like that right now.
It just seems to me, I agree with that. I, I would think that the, the, the higher-grade street, design-wise, should take precedence over the lower one. In other words, if there's a thorough fare, then that's the one that should lead through the intersection and the standard would be on the side, but not go through. So that a person who came, had came, landed in Wilsonville and didn't know anything and wanted to follow the street could follow the street because it would look like one
So I guess the question still in my mind is, is, is this continuous seamless green path from the
Good point.
...bridge landing all the way through town? Is that going to be pursued as redevelopment occurs and as opportunities come up? Or we have other ways of achieving that? Or what are the options that we have?
I guess I have a question for the consultant, just to clarify. For, on page 12, that green, unless the version I have in my packet may be printed wrong, I don't feel like correlates to anything in the key. So that was there to indicate, just to make sure I'm interpreting it correctly, the Emerald Chain, which is the bicycle and pedestrian connection, which doesn't necessarily intersect with investment level. It's just the continuity of that bicycle and pedestrian connection, correct?
Correct, yeah. That's the approximate Emerald Chain route that we've identified out of the Town Center Plan from several years ago and then have been seeking to refine a little bit through this Streetscape project, though knowing that the prototypes that we're designing don't in totality cover the Emerald Chain. We're just looking at segments of it, you know, such as location number 12, which is the promenade, or location D, which is part of that central Main Street on Park Place. So we are trying to bring, you know, the signature elements to bear in those locations. But yes, Philip, you're right, that the green line throughout the entire map represents basically the vision of the Emerald Chain, not necessarily the specific facilities in each segment. And I'll make sure we update the legend, you know, to represent exactly what the screen line means in the next draft.
So Mr. Weber, let me, let me make sure I understand you correctly. What I am hearing is this ribbon is a functional ribbon of pedestrian bike pad, kind of a, an access. And it could be a bike lane on the side of the street, it could be a promenade, it could be all kinds of different things, but so long as it conveys bikers and hikers, we're good. Is that, is that what you're saying?
So if I could, I'll actually jump in here. I'll let you off the caravant as Kim Rabelt, Senior Planner. So the green, that green shading really represents the Emerald Chain concept from the Town Center Plan. And how that is implemented in the plan is through a series of some of the infrastructure investments that are called out, components of which have a cycle track. And so really, you, you have these different pieces that connect you from the Ped Bridge all the way down to Memorial Park. A lot of that will be achieved through the Bridge Landing Plaza and then the connection over to the promenade. And then those links in between are mostly achieved through different cycle tracks that are called out as part of these other, either improvements or enhancements to some of the existing roads. And so I think to get back to your question about how do these happen, some of it, parts like the promenade probably could be something that are, that are, are achieved as part of redevelopment. But other pieces, like those out here on Town Center Loop East or on Courtside, are going to be part of city-led infrastructure investments that, you know, we'll start tackling as redevelopment comes into play. So I think it's a little bit of both, but it's really a lot of that green and that mobility is going to be achieved through those cycle tracks that are a part of the roadway cross-section.
So what I'm hearing is this is not a continuous ribbon, it is nodes and links. In other words, you get to a, a razzle-dazzle facility, which could be a landing from the bridge or a park or this or that. But in between, there is no yellow brick road that you're following. You're, you're just following the, the trail, so to speak, to the next node. So that's node and link.
Yeah, and, and my recommendation would be if, if we have signature all the way through minus one intersection, we might as well include that intersection as well.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that we have everything all the way other than one intersection. What I'm hearing is we are, we are missing more than we have in this continuous
Yeah, it looks like the signature's
...wide ribbon. We can't have a promenade going from the landing all the way through Town Center, all the way to the library, right? We don't have that kind of real estate.
Well, and, and that's not what I'm looking for, but when I look at, at Park Place as a signature road going all the way through and you have the promenade connecting directly to that, and theoretically, the promenade connecting to the East Landing, it's that one intersection that we're missing. And so I'd, I'd like for, for the staff to be able to look and see if that is feasible to ensure that we have a connection that is consistent. to ensure that we have a connection that is consistent through when we're talking about the signature elements.
At least there.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the rest of it, I'm okay with. I have questions around the intersections elsewhere, but in terms of that specific question, that's what I'm looking for.
Okay. That is, the question now is clear.
Yeah, so, I mean, the question, or the answer to the question, I would say is somewhat dependent on the commission. I hear Commissioner Everline speaking to the fact that he'd like to see that promenade extended to intersect essentially with both streets, and that he'd want that intersection with the plaza to be signature. So I think getting additional input from the commission on if the rest of the commission believes that should be signature or enhanced is helpful.
Very good. And Commissioner Gallagher, I think, from what I understood, we're looking to keep this continuous to the extent possible so that you can say, follow the yellow brick road, so to speak. If it's possible. And that would be my preference too, if we can get it. But I understand that that's not going to be easy to do because this is a developed area and, and even in redevelopment, you're not going to be able to carve 120 feet of right-of-way for a promenade next to a street.
Much of that load is going to have to be carried by signage, I should think.
Yeah.
Well, or trade design. I mean, I think there's a lot of ways to create a sense of continuity, and I think that's my concern. Not necessarily where it is, but just a sense of that it's planned, that there's a, there's a reason why this road is this way, and that it helps people move, because you want people to explore, you don't want them to get stuck in a place and go, oh, that's all there is. So there's a sense of bringing them along into an experience. That's really what we're trying to create here, I think, is
Right, and I think to the commission's point, there are signature streets that aren't the promenade, and those elements that we, we picked the promenade to show in this presentation, that there are other streets, including the Main Street that have, or primarily the Main Street, that have those enhanced elements and design features. So some of those can be integrated into that intersection without having to have like that entire cross-section of a promenade, or have that promenade necessarily continue on. But you can merge those elements into that intersection that faces with the plaza.
Also, one of the things that happens when urban design has been completed is the opportunity comes up to program it, actually. For example, when you program an art walk, that doesn't mean every step has an artwork at it, but you have a program that says, your next step is this thing, and, and takes you there. Same probably will happen here once it's developed. We are, we are trying to figure out
Where's the beginning?
What the baby is going to look like, yes. Not how it's going to graduate from college. Any other inputs for staff?
I'm, I'm less concerned about the continuity there. I think as this gets built out over time, it's going to be, we're going to have to be patient and see it built out over time progressively, and so I think the continuity will work itself out.
Commissioner Zuzinski?
I, I have a totally different question, so I didn't want to
Let's wait for that, let's wait for that. Commissioner Greenfield, are you done?
Right, I, I, my only point is that we want to avoid either confusion or jarring in transitions.
It also occurs to me that development can create the next destination. It could be a coffee shop. You know, something like that, or a restaurant, or whatever. So all of those could help this continuity. So should we go to your question, Commissioner Zuzinski? Go for it.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate that you guys are possibly changing some of the trees, I don't know if you can hear me, to reflect what's going on with our weather patterns now. And I wanted to know, are you changing all of them, most of them, key ones? What's, if you could kind of clarify that?
We are going to change, likely, the, the, like, I forget, let me switch to the page so I call it by the right thing. But the primary street tree, we have some concerns because the trees in our parking lot here, I think, are the same variety. And I don't know if any of you noticed, if you drove here, there's quite a bit of sap dripping off them, and in the spring, they do drop a lot. And if this is going to be an area that we want people to walk around a lot and park their cars and bikes, maybe we don't want tree species that are releasing a lot of seeds, or I don't know what they drop, but, and we've heard from a portion of Vilbo that has the same type of trees, that they create stickiness on the sidewalk as well. And we don't want it to become a maintenance issue long-term. They're very beautiful, nice trees, but maybe finding a different tree off the list would be more suitable. And then we've also heard a few things from different divisions about the ginkgos, certain odors, certain times of year, and the black tupelo, also a very cool tree, but the branches can be low, so if we want to have a higher pedestrian traffic in Town Center, we don't want them to have any sort of hazards or issues with the branches being low in the streets. So just sort of revisit that and make sure that the most appropriate species are in there for the context, and also the, so far, we had included zelkovas, and there seem to be a lot of tree removal permits from the ice storm that were zelkovas. So we just want to make sure that, is that because of the age those zelkovas were, and they were particularly vulnerable to the ice storm? Because we've seen trends in when certain tree species were planted in a certain era? Is that because of the age those trees are currently, or are they particularly vulnerable to ice and breakage in winter? Or are some of the trees we're seeing now that are dying in the heat, are those trees, is that going to be a longer-term problem? So it would be good to just revisit the list from the Urban Forest Management Plan and take a look at what we've seen coming in as far as tree permits, and stuff we know about the existing trees we have in the city, and just make sure that those are what we want to go with. I think the renderings wouldn't necessarily change because most people looking at that could necessarily pick out what tree species that is just from the render, but I could see there being some changes to the tax between now and adoption.
Okay. That answers my question.
Did we answer the questions that you were asking?
I have another question.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all right. So back to the picture that we were just on, sorry. And I'll answer your questions, I promise. So the map and the intersections on Wilsonville Road, you have one intersection identified as enhanced. What was the rationale for having a, an enhanced intersection with a standard connecting street?
The reason we made that intersection enhanced is on the Town Center Master Plan, that is another street that includes bike facilities. So we thought the Ruth intersection would be one that could maybe incorporate some more enhanced features to it, to set it apart a little bit, and that was the logic behind that one, having the intersection enhanced.
Okay, and then what about the rest of them? That one was clear in terms of what the plan was for the intersection, because I see the green dot. What about the other three intersections? Are those aligning with the, the street identifiers?
Yes.
Okay.
Main Street slash Park Place would be signature, and then the Town Center, East and West would be the standard. We would have to transition the signature at the Wilsonville Road and Park Place intersection because the rest of it is outside the project scope, but that specific, within where it is within this project scope, would be signature.
Okay. It might, for clarity, be good to more clearly identify the rest of those. Other than that, to answer the two questions, I'm, I'm good with what you guys have. No further questions or recommendations.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Apart from the lighting fixtures, which we can't do anything about, and I think are incredibly unattractive. I'm, I'm fine, I, I think this is an outstanding visual presentation.
And they're doing something with the, about the lighting fixtures, so don't give up hope.
Yeah, we, we hope we can change and get a more contemporary one, but we'll see what happens with PGE, but I'm optimistic.
Very good.
Thank you all for the feedback tonight. Got to share my screen, the presentation.
You should be able to share it.
All right.
Just Chair Mezba, would you like us to go ahead and proceed with the next work session item? Wonderful.
That was the idea, I think.
Okay.
When we closed the previous
I just want to make sure before I start talking. So just to ground us on the next work session item, as you all know, the I-5 pedestrian and bicycle bridge is a key project from the city's transportation system plan. It also was elevated as a framework project through the Town Center Plan for a few reasons. One, to really connect the Town Center with the Transit Center and all of the neighborhoods to the west, who currently have to bike or walk through and across interchanges, really to get to this part of town or to get to the west side. And also is a key connection on our trail system. We have trails that connect on the west side to the Ice Age Tonkin Trail and down to the south to the river, across I-5 to Memorial Park. And what's basically missing is that Emerald Chain linking Morasee Plaza up to this bridge and across I-5. This will create an amazing loop for the city, really making the whole city accessible to folks on bike and walking. So through that Town Center Plan, as you know, the Gateway Plaza was added to that project to really create a welcoming plaza at the Town Center to mark this special place and create a community gathering place for, for the community. Tonight, we're at 60% design. The project team is going to be sharing with you some really exciting images, provide you with what has been updated. Has some key questions to ask you to help get that team to 90% design, which will happen by the end of this year. You will see, as you go through, through this, some similarities. As you know, some of the themes of the streetscape were very similar to some of the themes that the community really liked when we did the bridge and plaza design, including the drops and ripples and the River Oxbow, things that really connect us to the Willamette River and the beautiful nature we have on our back doorstep, but also a lot of that modern and, and clean but warm design. So it's exciting. You'll see a lot of similarities with the streetscape, but I think you'll also see that the plaza is also standing on its own. It's really coming out and has extra features, some cool design and amenity that really created a special and dynamic plaza that will be one of those gems, one of those emeralds along the chain that's connected by the streetscape. So with that, I will hand it over to the project manager for this project, Zach Weigl, our capital engineering manager, and he'll introduce his team.
All right, great, thank you, Miranda. Good evening, Chair Mezba and Planning Commission. As Miranda said, my name is Zach Weigl, Capital Projects Engineering Manager for the city. And with me is Kim Rybal, the planner with the city, and Jared Trowbridge with the design team with Dow. And unfortunately, Melissa with MIG, the landscape architect on this project, was going to give the presentation tonight, but she is stuck in Maryland on a train somewhere, so. Not sure, she's probably thrilled that an engineer is going to talk about her landscape architect design, but that's what we're going to do tonight, so, and Kim is going to help me out, so. With that, we'll get started, and just as a reminder, this is the, the bridge design, the tied arch, this was selected back in, as part of that early outreach about a year ago from now. So some of the bridge aesthetic enhancement options that we've kind of developed over the last time we met back in March, since 30% design, is we started taking a look at the lighting. We got a lot of feedback from both Planning Commission and City Council at the last meetings about what the lighting should look like, and again, this is kind of the alignment of the multi-use path coming down Boons Ferry Road and then rising up to the bridge over I-5, and then dropping back down there into the plaza. So there's kind of two different lighting types that we need to consider. We need to consider the safety lighting for, for pedestrians and users of the bridge, so the standard white, you know, street lighting that you would see, and then also the, the colored lighting that we had talked about, wanting to be able to illuminate the bridge and, and bring some color, and be able to celebrate different events. So starting off with that more standard lighting, there's not room on this bridge for your standard poles, right? So the design team has come up with this, their click pod lighting, and they get incorporated into the security fencing and railing with the project. So pretty interesting way to light, to provide that needed lighting across the bridge. And then the other type of lighting I mentioned is that projection lighting, really highlighting the structure of the bridge. This is one example of the lighting type that can be done with this, this particular lighting style. I know that the Planning Commission had mentioned that they wanted some, to be able to do some cool lighting effects on the, on the pathway across the bridge, and also be able to highlight the structure of the bridge. And I think this, what the design team has come up with has really made that possible. One image that wasn't in your packet that we had the consultant add is another different-colored bridge with a view from I-5, so, or different color lighting. So this is that, that image. And then back in May and June, we did some public outreach about this retaining wall. This is along Boons Ferry Road, and what that design could look like. We did a survey on Let's Talk, and we had about 170 respondents, and we're just trying to get a sense of what people were looking for, what they were interested in, and what that, what could be added to that wall to bring something to that side of the project. And really, the two, the two top vote-getters were the wildlife etching and, again, the basalt, the basalt columns, so those remain being important. Our recommendation moving forward as staff is that when we get close to construction is that we engage the local art community and do a process to select an artist to come up with a, a design for that wall, so. So going back to the, to the ramp and the plaza, this is kind of the update this is kind of the updated design of the plaza, combining the drops and ripples and the River Oxbow designs. This image, I know, is, it's very busy. It's hard to see what's going on. The next slides, you probably saw in your packet, do a good job of kind of explaining where things are, what amenities are located where. So again, the 30% design, we were looking at this basalt column design. It's really expensive. So we had the consultant look at what other options there are out there that could, you know, get us to this look that are a little bit cheaper. We wanted to point this out to the Planning Commission because this is a key component to the design of the plaza, right? It's a very important component. This was, you know, what the community identifies as number one every time we bring these images up. So this is another option. It's a form liner with concrete. We would do this in a gray color. It's shown in a, you know, in a darker gray color. It's shown in more of the standard concrete color, right, in this photo. But we'd like to get Planning Commission's input on that, between those two features. Another thing we wanted to point out that is a key design feature that's changed in this is the specialty paving throughout the plaza. Originally, we had shown these hexagonal pavers that were going to be placed throughout the plaza. The Public Works and Parks and Recreation Department have concerns with maintenance long-term with pavers. And there will be a need to access the bridge with vehicles, and maintenance vehicles will need to access the plaza. So there will be vehicles driving on portions of the plaza and that entrance area to the bridge. So as part of the 60% design, the design team came up with this embedded glass concrete. That would be, instead of those pavers, there would be those, there's those circles of different bands of concrete, and then there would be the glass concrete radiating outward. So instead of that, the pavers making that, those drops effects, it would be this, these bands of concrete and colored glass. Again, the fern wall is still on that north side of the bridge. It's still included in the design. And then we are integrating the seating into those little mounds that are kind of spaced throughout the plaza. We also are starting to look at integrating some of the curvilinear seating from the streetscape plan into the plaza. So we'll have different types of seating, different looks to the seating, but making sure we have that continuity between streetscape plan and the plaza design. Everybody loves these rocks, the seating, the rocks for seating. We're proposing having three different colors kind of scattered out through the plaza, that white and kind of brown or gray, and then the darker gray. Last time at Planning Commission, there was mention of wanting to see some tables incorporated into the design. And the way that the seating is kind of laid out makes that a little bit challenging, but the design consultant came up with this really cool product to incorporate that into the seating. And then you can see some options of, we have a lot of concrete seat walls throughout the design of the plaza, and this is a way to kind of soften that and add some wood elements and get that seating with seat backs on it. And again, we have the mounds to add that kind of, that different change in elevation, so not everything is so flat. And those are incorporated throughout the design. They're not, you know, the mounds aren't so high that you can't see past them, but they do provide some interest while you're walking through that River Oxbow path. We're continuing with the ripple details. There's a couple areas where there's these tiered, the stepped ripples that come down. The ones that are, you know, Parks has a concern about being able to access those with their equipment. So the ones that are proposed for the plaza are not grass, but they'll be planted with a variety of different plantings. And then we also have the flatter areas where they have the concrete bands that represent those ripples in a few locations. And then we, as part of the, you know, creating this impervious area, we got to treat that stormwater. So the design team has done a really amazing job of incorporating this rain garden into the middle of the plaza and having the boardwalk for that River Oxbow kind of carry people across that. So really cool detail. Some of the elements you can see in this image. And then these are some of the features that are proposed to be in the plaza. You'll notice a lot of similarity between, they're the same elements as in the streetscape plan, just a different finish. So we'll have, you know, they're not the same, but they are compatible. And then last time at Planning Commission, we heard that there's a need to have shade and some rain protection at different seating areas throughout the plaza. And the design team really came up with this really neat idea of this shade structure. You know, it's not completely solid surface, but it does offer some shade and rain protection. So with coming up to, coming to 60% design, we do have updated cost estimates. And I know that was an interest last time we met with Planning Commission. So we provided that information here. The project design is between six, or project construction would be between 17 to 22 and a half million dollars. You can see the breakdown there between the bridge and the plaza itself. You know, it is higher. It's a higher cost. But I do want to make the point that the design team has been considering costs as we move forward through design. And there's a lot of, there's a lot of areas where we're able to save costs as we continue, and they've been listed here, so. So with that, we, you know, we'd like to hear from Planning Commission about, you know, does, how is the design looking? Is it meeting kind of the expectation and the feedback that we've been provided so far? So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a quick question.
Go ahead.
Do we know, kind of ballpark what the price difference would be between the sourced basalt and the concrete?
Yeah, and Jared, I don't know if you have the total. I know the, we got the cost per square foot between the two, and it was about 10 times, between eight to times 10 times more. You know, I don't know what that impact is on the total cost. I don't know if Jared was able to calculate that or not, but...
So I'm going to have to interrupt for a moment. We may have to take like a two-minute recess. I believe we have lost the connection with audio to Zoom. So Jared, our panelist, could not hear half of the presentation, and he may still not be able to hear. So I'm going to take a moment. I don't know if the Planning Commission wants to recess for two minutes while I redial in on the phone. Is that something that the chair would like to do?
If that's what you want the chair to do, the chair will do that.
That would be great.
We'll have a five-minute recess. How's that?
That sounds great.
Good. We'll be back at 7:10.
Sorry, Zach.
Are you saying we shouldn't go back into session? There we go. Zach is back. Is Aaron with us or not, Miranda?
No, Commissioner Woods ended up communicating with Mr. Polly and let him know he would not be able to attend this evening.
All right. Very good. We are, we are back.
All right, great.
So where were we at? You were starting a question.
Uh, yeah, I was asking about the, how much the price difference for the basalt.
Yes, and it was like eight times more.
Yeah, so Jared is furiously calculating right now.
Oh, Jared is doing it.
You can see him.
That's the part he didn't hear.
While he's calculating, I'll ask a question.
Sure.
Can you go back to the picture with the tables? I wanted to see that and get another chance to look at that again. So it's those two pictures on the left.
Yeah, right.
Is there concern from Public Works as to how robust those are going to be?
Yeah.
They look susceptible to damage.
Yeah. So we've, that, yes, that exact comment came from Public Works, and the design team will be looking at how, you know, addressing that as we move forward in design. So it may not end up being this exact product, but it will be something similar.
Okay, yeah, I guess from my perspective, I'd much rather have no tables than tables that are easily damaged, so.
But also raises an issue of, if you have tables and you're inviting people to come in with food and drinks and put things on them, and then that leads to making sure there's a place to throw things away, where if you don't have tables, it's...
Right. Yeah, and, you know, throughout our parks, we provide the, you know, waste receptacles and those kind of facilities.
It invites different behavior.
In looking at Slide 19, which is the paving, the specialty paving options, when I look at by itself, Slide 20, that has the glass river ribbons, I don't dislike that, but in context of what we were just looking at, the streetscape plan, it seems like the, that will not integrate well with the streetscape plan. The streetscape plan has stamped or tinted concrete as part of the signature level. And I think we'd be better off with stamped or tinted concrete here, so that way it looks a little more seamless, because this would seem a little bit disjointed.
Right. Yeah, I mean, this, I think, keep in mind that the streetscape plan, the plaza has a, you know, its design, and the streetscape plan has its design, and then there's, you know, a transition between them. You know, I think the design team is trying to incorporate that color into those drops and ripples that are part of the plaza. So if you look, so this image here on the right is a good example of what the design team is trying to create in this plaza. So this is a good image down at the central plaza or the entrance plaza there in the bottom right corner, where you have those different bands and incorporating color into those bands. The part that's kind of the brownish color will be your standard concrete, and the grayish will be that glass banding concrete. So, you know, you have, there, the, the... There'll be a street crossing right at that entrance, and then across the street will start the promenade, a signature design. I don't know if that helps.
Will we get to weigh in on the final design?
A final design of the...
Like, there's three choices there right now. Will we get the opportunity to weigh in on our choices?
So there's, the proposed is the, is the blue glass on the, on the right corner.
Yeah, okay. I'm good with that.
So I'll add in too, I think the goal is, you know, there's certainly an aesthetic that the color adds. And maybe you can speak more to this, Zach, but I understand with the circular nature of the pattern that's created by the drops and ripples, it's, I think it's more complicated to do something like that using kind of that stamped and colored concrete in execution than it would be to apply something like this in that circular pattern, which is sort of different, I think, than the setting you have in the streetscape and the sidewalk, where it's kind of a larger, more contiguous band of concrete. And so I think that's why they've looked at this material as something that can create that distinction with those drops and ripples, but not necessarily, you know, I don't think they're trying, or the goal here, consistent with the, you know, really the design concept would be to try to replicate the sidewalk pattern from streetscape. And I think that's partly... and I think that's partly why you're seeing the difference too, for those two reasons. We all liked the look of the pavers too, I, I think, you know, one of the comments that we gave is that the glass by its nature, and I think particularly for me, looking at the example on the left side, you know, it feels a lot more fuzzy, it doesn't feel as distinct and as direct of a pattern, and so I think we've really asked the team to think about how, you know, if we are applying that glass, how it can be done in a way that's really clean and crisp, and trying to create that effect of the drops and ripples.
It looks washed out.
Yeah, it looks like somebody was trying to draw a line and was a little dizzy.
Yeah.
Couldn't keep a straight line, kind of thing.
Well, we've provided that, that feedback too, on, I think, one of the concepts they gave us showed the, the river, the oxbow path, the meandering path, and they were trying to do something similar to that, and I don't think any of us even internally cared for it. So I think we're really hopeful that we're trying to provide feedback that really focuses on how you can use a material like this to emphasize the ripples as really that defining central feature of the plaza. And so, we, we've asked if there's any other options, so I think, you know, as we move forward, you know, I think we'll probably give them feedback, and if there is still some concern or skepticism among this group, that's helpful to have. And, you know, when we come back with the 90% design, I think maybe we can key that in a little more.
Right now, what is the, what is the tendency in the choice? Among these three?
So I think these are really just representative samples. The, the, as Zach noted, the, the more greenish turquoise teal color, which is, I think, reflected in a couple of the other elements in the plaza to provide that pop of color. This is the recommended color that is most consistent from a design standpoint with that. I think the example in the middle is intended to illustrate how you can have a more clean line, which is what I think we would envision in those ripples.
It needs that much contrast.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, honestly, that, the picture on the left, I think, I, I think that's helpful to hear that you, you share this similar feedback, that it doesn't really pop the way that the concept that we've all been weighing in on envisions.
Well, but part of it, when I look at the plaza with the circles and so forth, you have color there everywhere, and that's a different tableau than the sidewalk, which looks like somebody did chalk drawing and it rained on it. If you're doing something like that, then the rest of the sidewalk needs to have quartz in it or something to create contrast, or colors that, that make the main meander pop. The whole thing should be a canvas, not just doing a line in the middle and it's just regular sidewalk for the rest of it. So that's my recommendation, if that's where you're going.
Yeah, that was not the intent to just have this meandering glass pathway through the middle of the path. That was one of the proposals early on, and we had the consultant remove this. This is really just those, those circular bands that are shown. Let me find that image again.
I think that the picture on the right is the most successful in terms of the theme that you're trying to create.
So like.
There were three pictures, and the one with the blues with the, it seemed most, the most cohesive idea of those three.
This one? That's the plaza, that's the circles in the plaza.
If you're going to have an idea there, then you want to carry it through.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm seeing, this, the whole thing is color. You don't have concrete anywhere here, it's just all color. So the sidewalk would, would have to have the same treatment.
But I think with the screen you're looking at is slide 18, and that's what they can't afford. They're not doing that.
This?
Yes.
They're not doing these.
Okay, so let's clarify, slide 18.
You're not doing the left-hand side ones.
Or, I'm sorry, 19, slide 19.
What, what are you looking at? We're looking at.
Slide 19, which is the.
That's not what's on my screen.
Yeah, can you, we're looking at our computers, can you go to the slide 19 on the overhead?
Folks, while he's doing that, would you look down at your microphones and make sure the green light's on?
Green light's on, and all of us.
Thank you. For some reason, it's a little bit quiet, I'm not sure why.
Go down two more, there, to 19, please.
There we go.
There, there we go.
So the right-hand picture here is not affordable, is that what you're saying?
No, that was, I, that was, I was just using that as an example of the, what the design team is trying to create with the, the, the different colors of, of the circular.
The glass.
Of glass.
With the glass, so, yeah, one would be your standard concrete, then the glass, standard concrete, yeah.
So that works, everybody is saying that works.
That works.
Yeah.
But that's not glass.
No, it's not, it's just an example.
Yeah, of the geometries or the, the tone.
Or the look, because it's very free-form, it's like a river, it flows rather than just being a straight ahead line.
So the other two pictures here are the ones you were saying Public Works said no to that because it's hard to maintain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, that, that photo is pavers.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a no-no, yeah.
And actually, looking at it, unless, you know, you're, you're flying 60 feet up in the air, you're not going to see the pattern as well with those. So the right-hand side picture, the closest you can get to that, however you can do that, I'm all for that, I think that works for me.
I agree.
Visually.
So I guess, I guess a follow-up question with that is, are you, are you saying you like the gray, light gray, or still try and incorporate the glass?
The blue.
The blue with that, okay.
You can incorporate the glass, what I'm saying is, this has a cohesiveness to its overall look that makes it attractive. Now, you can achieve it with pavers, you can achieve it with glass, you can achieve it, whatever, however, is easy to maintain and pull off, it works.
And it also has a rhythm to it, from an art, artistic point of view, it, it flows, it's in circles, it's not straight lines and angular, and it's going to make a difference.
Right, so the, so the, just to clarify, the image on the left of this is, we're not doing that? Okay, great.
Yeah, we have trashed, trashed that adequately, I think.
All right. Sorry for the confusion.
So the right, the, the picture to the right though here is the one that you're going with?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That is the color, yeah.
And what is the middle one?
That, that middle one was to try to depict how you can do clean lines with, with the glass.
By concentrating more glass in the concrete?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Well, Jared is still trying to figure out the cost.
So can you go up a few slides, Zach? So with the, I think the next one up.
That one.
Yep, so, I think Zach probably showed you when I lost audio the difference between, or talked about the difference between the unit cost between the form liner and the source basalt column. It's about $200 and $250 a square foot more than just the concrete form liner, and so if we were just to do that pink band there with this basalt source, it'd be about $400,000 more expensive. And it's probably a similar cost difference on the west side along Boone Ferry.
Zach, can you go down to the cost slide? When I took a look at that.
Straight $20 million.
It's a big difference, though.
Yeah.
Huge difference.
So these, these costs don't, don't have the source basalt, so these would all go up if we went with the source basalt on one or both walls?
And I think to clarify here, we're really just talking in terms of any decisions we're making right now with this design, if we're talking about the wall and the plaza, because as Zach mentioned earlier, the basalt is certainly a design inspiration that scored well, but our recommendation is that any, any future design of that particular retaining wall happen closer to the time of construction, so just to be clear, Jared, the $400,000 is purely in addition to this plaza cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And then a comparable increase on the west side ramp if we were to use basalt in that area as well?
That would be the case if, if it went with basalt, our, our, just to reiterate, our, the staff recommendation is to engage local artists before construction.
What are implications for maintenance?
The, the maintenance is not all that different between the two.
Your pressure?
It's really about the, it's really about the installation.
You're saying you pressure wash both of them, is what you're saying?
It, it seems that if we, if we can't have the basalt, sourced basalt, could we switch the fern wall with the fake basalt wall? Because the, the, one on the interior of the curve is going to get the most activity, that's where the plaza is, and the fern wall is more interesting to me than, than a concrete poured basalt wall.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can talk with the design team about, definitely.
The other thing that popped in my mind is if you're going with concrete, instead of faking basalt, some of the artistic concrete kind of work that you showed in your presentation, to me, are much more attractive. What was it, the, the, the bird and so forth? The swamp, swamp motif, yeah, all of that is, at least is artistic and not trying to fake something that's natural.
Yeah, and maybe we could get a local artist to design it as well.
Yeah, I'll have to say, I, I like the idea for Commissioner Willard of, of putting the fern wall on the more used side and having the concrete and, and a planer wall. When I was looking at the, the overall picture and seeing where the fern wall was, I was wondering if there was going to be enough traffic on that side to justify it to begin with, and if we're, you know, talking about swapping that around seems like a great idea to me.
I agree.
Well, the fern wall needs to also survive as a living, living, living wall.
Yeah, it will be south-facing if we switch.
It's going to become cactus wall.
With our heat waves, we might have to have a succulent wall.
But I think that, you know, either of those gives kind of the design team some options to look at.
Well, you know, the slide that you're showing now, the top left, I prefer that much, much more than a basalt-looking concrete wall that tells me it's concrete, it's not basalt.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Petaluma, no, I don't think so, I, you know, some of the, I, I hope we get into artistic expressions that are.
Compatible.
Compatible, authentic, you know, and all of that. So the idea of having a group of artists kind of figure out how to have a competition for the art that goes on, this is a good one.
Great. And we can definitely look into that with the design team.
So everybody that, who voted for the, for the basalt wall, did you show them the concrete basalt, or are they still enthusiastic about it?
No, we did not show that image.
Yeah.
This is helpful feedback to have, though.
I think, I think we can guess what it would score.
Any other recommendation, anything else, Commissioner, on that?
Not for now.
All right, great.
Is our recommendation real basalt or def? Real, real basalt or birds? Or birds, or something?
I don't think the basalt goes with the, the theme as well, so I don't think it's worth the premium. I don't think it adds, I like it, but in a different context.
I don't think it's worth taking a hard stand on.
Yeah, I don't either.
What if it's basalt and a waterfall?
And a live crane.
Okay, all, all in good clean fun. The, I think, I think we have exhausted the, the topic, unless you have any other questions for us?
No, that's great feedback, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We will continue on. Thank you so much.
Very good.
Have fun.
So, Madam Bechel, back to you.
Wonderful, thank you, Chair Masbah. I am going to do a little Zoom magic, hopefully, here. It looks like our audio is still connected, so that's good. All right, so our last work session item tonight is on middle housing. I feel like we've been running a bit of a marathon and a sprint on this topic, and I'd like to express my gratitude. We've had many work sessions, it's work, important work, and work that needs to be done on a timeline that meets both the state requirements, but also our own goals and projects that we have moving forward on our own timelines. And so it's been definitely a project that's taken a lot of the project team's time, as well as the planning commission's time. We spent a lot of time talking about the ins and outs of this, the big policy questions, as well as the fine-grained details of how much glazing and what articulation we want in these houses. So I know it, at times, has probably felt like you've been here and then there on this topic. Well, good news, final work session. This is the final work session on this item. We prepare to have a public hearing on this item coming up in September, next month. And so, project team is here tonight to essentially present the final package, which is why your packet was very robust this evening. We have included every single change we've discussed over the past 12 months. We hope you read every single word of it, and make sure that it all lines up with your expectations. The team will be doing a final review, will be seeking attorney's assistance in a final review to ensure that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, but of course, we welcome any of that feedback if you have it between now and probably the next couple of weeks as we prepare the final hearing package. But tonight, there's a few extra kind of last-minute things to provide you updates on from the last discussions, things that we've revised, we've amended based on your input and council input. And we have just a couple other questions for you all to give us feedback on, and then we'll work to prepare for the hearing. So with that, I'm going to get the rest of the consultant team in here, and I'm going to hand it over to Daniel Pauli, Planning Manager with the City of Wilsonville.
Thank you, Miranda, and I would also like to thank the commission for going through this marathon with me. We are on the home stretch now, so, and this will not, I promise this will not be my longest presentation on this topic.
What are you going to do with your life after this is done?
I'm trying to balance both of them right now, so. You're not rid of me, I'll be here talking about more stuff, so. I also would like to extend my thanks for, to those of you that did such an excellent job in your participation on the July 20th forum. We got so much positive feedback from that forum. We hope you enjoyed participating, and I know we really enjoyed it and got good feedback, so thank you. So what we are going to talk about tonight is, we turn to a concept we have not talked about for quite a while, middle housing land divisions. Go through some other recent updates, and then gather any remaining questions and comments you have. In that, also want to discuss some recent comments about accessibility and visitability. I can pronounce it better than habitable. All right, so, wanted to revisit some desired project outcomes. All right, so, um, wanted to revisit some desired project outcomes because these are important. I mean, this is why we're doing this, having a thoughtful, inclusive built environment, compliance with our state rules and laws, uh, meeting housing needs, uh, impactful public outreach, infrastructure to support middle housing, having usable standards and minimizing parking congestion. I think those last two are, are, uh, are something that's a big part of what we'll be discussing tonight. So I hope this is, continues to be helpful, these four categories. Uh, just want to continue to highlight these because it, it does help digest, uh, the, the many updates that are before you. So earlier in the year, we discussed, or was it last year? I think it was still this year. We discussed allowing middle housing to be divided up so it can be sold to individuals. Uh, there was support of that concept and the flexibility that afforded, both with council and planning commission. Also outreach, we've done this here, including the, the focus groups with the Latinx community have stressed affordable ownership opportunities. I would add that council's recent goal setting session also emphasized the idea of affordable home ownership. So this middle, this, uh, while it's kind of technical, it also has a big impact on, in terms of affordable home ownership and being able to sell these different units to different owners. So let me kind of give you the key points, but in the end, the big idea is that it's accomplishing that goal of allowing the land to be divided up so it can be sold to individual owners during these middle housing developments. So, uh, some key points is, so in May, Governor Brown signed Senate Bill 458, uh, which requires by June of next year that cities allow for middle housing land divisions, that they allow, uh, like a quadplex or a triplex to be divided and sold, each unit sold separately. Uh, so for, for really, and it aligns, and honestly, we were involved in some of the drafting of this and gave some feedback, so, uh, it aligns pretty well with what we had drafted and kind of thought about, uh, at the beginning of this project. And so that's actually quite fortunate that we're able to essentially pull what we had off the shelf and what we talked about early and knowing now that we had state law to back up that concept and, uh, move forward with it, and that's our recommendation. So some other main ideas, uh, that are kind of, I guess, new ideas are different than maybe how we've thought about land divisions in the past and zoning, is these land divisions are only for property, for plating and property transfer purposes. Zoning regulations such as setbacks, minimum lot size are applied to the parent lot. So you don't have to make all those child lots or, uh, middle housing land division units, uh, meet the zoning setbacks or minimum lot size as long as that, the development in itself does. Something that's key is it does not change the type of housing, uh, unit. Uh, so for, that can become, let me give a couple examples. So if you have a cottage cluster, uh, and you divide each unit onto its own lot, arguably that could be defined as a single family and then that could be turned into duplex and this whole domino effect essentially. And once it's, whatever it's designated as, as middle housing, whether it's a duplex or a triplex or, uh, or a cottage cluster, it stays that same definition regardless of whether or not you add these property lines. So that really makes, makes sure that all the regulations that apply outside of being able to sell it, apply, apply the same. Uh, it, what the state, what the, what Senate Bill 458 requires is that it be allowed for new middle housing starting, uh, July 1, 2022. Uh, based on feedback we received, the city, the project team recommends expanding that allowance to existing middle housing as well as accessory dwelling units to really provide that flexibility for affordable home ownership. And another aspect of it, uh, is this, there's currently under state law, there's something called, uh, expedited review of land divisions. Uh, every jurisdictions I have ever talked to have never, no one ever takes advantage of it, but it's on the state statute. Uh, but what this, what the state law does is makes, uh, this, these type of land divisions eligible for that, which essentially makes the, what we call completeness review, which is the amount of time staff has to make sure we have everything, shortens that up and also shortens the time, the timeline that staff has to make a decision. That said, that, that would only apply to what the state requires. These, these expanded allowances would go through the same process as, as, as partitions currently do under the code. So, uh, so with that brief explanation, or fairly brief explanation, uh, does the PC support the recommended, recommended language regarding middle housing land divisions or have any questions? Or comments?
Yeah, I have a question about, um, what, how does, um, a parcel qualify for, to be expedited?
It qualifies if there's a, if there's a new middle housing project proposed on a site, then that would make it eligible for the expedited review.
Are any new, um, qualifications or any new zoning, uh, regulations applicable to expedited review that are not already there for the undivided land?
It, the zoning, like the, any, it's purely a process thing. It's a shorter timeframe. If it's appealed, it goes to a, to a hearings officer rather than to DRB and city council. So it's really a process in terms of what can be done. Uh, it, it, it doesn't change it, it just changes the process.
My sense of, of the administrative review is that basically, uh, it comes into play when, uh, the developer has a set of boxes to tick off and they're all ticked off. No sense going through a lengthy process of review if, uh, we can simply check to see that all the boxes are ticked off. Is that more or less what it is?
So there's different levels of administrative review, as you may. There's what's called ministerial review, uh, or what we call class one, which is essentially there's no discretion. We're just checking the box, making sure the plans match what was approved. There's really no judgment calls. Uh, then there's what is, what's called a class two or a type, a type two administrative review, which there is some limited discretion. And so that's subject to appeals, subject to notice, uh, to surrounding property owners, uh, to, and that would be the type of process that, that these would go, even the expedited review would go through. These aren't ministerial actions where there's no notice to neighbors and no discretion exercised.
In a type two review, uh, can it be referred to planning commission? Not to, not to planning commission, DRB?
Yeah, and that's the key difference with this expedited review required by state law is, is that, that for the expedited review under state law, if it's appealed, it goes directly to a hearings officer that the city appoints, uh, which is not a process we use for anything right now. A lot of jurisdictions do. But if it's these, kind of these expanded allowance things, it would go through that same process where if someone wanted to appeal administrative decision, it goes first to DRB and then they can appeal from DRB to city council.
And an expedited one, it can't go to DRB, is that?
It, it goes to a hearings officer and if they, and from a hearings officer, it goes directly to Luba, so it wouldn't go through DRB or city council.
Don't like the sound of it.
But that's, that's a specific requirement of state law, and we're only allowing that to the extent required under state law.
Gives a lot of, a lot of authority to the planning director, no offense intended. As far as other procedures that I'm familiar with, that's unprecedented.
This follows an existing procedure under state law.
Astonishing.
Are you done, Jerry?
What's that?
Are you done with your question?
I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Gallagher.
No, I'm, I'm good. I just want to say, it's an opportunity, I just want to say thank you to, uh, allowing us, me, to do the training, because this was covered in the training last week. So for the first time, I, I know what you're talking about. Thank you for the opportunity, it was very helpful.
Wonderful, I can't wait to hear more about it at the end of the agenda today.
Thank you.
So the, the bottom line here is that in going for expedited review, we give up overview, any possible overview by a citizen committee.
As required by state law.
As required by state law, but state law doesn't require that we do expedited review.
It does for these.
Yes.
Yes.
For, for new middle housing, it does.
We have to go through expedited review?
We have to.
Good night.
This is notification of the pending changes, not opportunity for us to comment, in my opinion.
And it's for the land division, so that's the piece that's expedited.
Right, yeah.
Because the middle housing development itself is a ministerial action where there's no notice to neighbors.
Okay. Not okay, but okay.
But if someone has an existing duplex out there that they want to divide, then it would be, go through that traditional process where it could be appealed to DRB and city council.
Okay.
So are you adjusting, Commissioner Green?
Adjust to reality generally.
Is, is this, can you, can you shed some light? The, the, the state is requiring this, I assume, because they want to prevent NIMBYism with middle housing. They're taking away citizens' gripe chance. Right?
That's what it feels to me.
Well, is that, is that correct though?
With middle housing, the fact that, I mean, you can develop a triplex without any notice to a neighbor, right? That's, that's House Bill 2001. And this, and to be fair, I mean, it is straightforward. I mean, you're drawing lines on a property for sale. I mean, you're not changing how far back it's setback or, right? You're not changing the look or the feel of it per se, you're just changing whether or not they can sell it to more than one person. Uh, and so, um, that, that is really, and the, what, for these, what you can actually apply to it, like what standards you can apply to it are specifically defined by the Senate Bill 458. And so it's like, I mean, it is outside of notice, I mean, it's pretty clear and objective, not a lot of leeway from local jurisdictions of what, what you can put on it. I mean, you can require street improvements in some circumstances, things like that, but it's pretty straightforward. And again, you're not actually approving any of the development, the vertical development with, with these land divisions, you're just approving, uh, where the line's drawn for sale.
Creating lots essentially is what you're doing.
With the same zoning.
For, with the same zoning.
Which is why it's probably that way.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. That's not one of the things you want any comment on, I assume.
No, it's a good discussion because it is.
Not, not directly, uh, related to that question, but on page five of the land division section, um, in section 4.23203, uh, C, you've got a whole list of easements here. Easements are provided for each dwelling unit four, and then there are nine items. Uh, I see actually only, uh, four unique items and, and, uh, maybe five unique items and four duplications. Might want to look at that.
Yeah, the, that's a list directly from state law, and I think some of the formatting must have gotten off, there must have been some cutting, pasting or something there that was haywire, so we'll correct that.
Can you tell us what page that is again?
It's page five of, uh, attachment one.
Got it. Thank you.
I, I recall as we, as I did this, like there, it was hidden, word was hiding it for some reason, and so I think that's why I got haywire, so. But I have the list directly in, from the, from the, uh, Senate bill. I mean, there was no creative writing in that list.
I figured it was, it had to do with some lists.
Yeah. But I've made a note to correct that.
The bottom line is that this is going to, this not only required, but it is also going to make the, make our work for making middle housing possible easier, is that what the bottom line is?
And I'll, I'll discuss that a bit more in the Frog Pond context as well, because, you know, a lot of these builders, I mean, their market is the individual home buyer. They're not looking, you know, their marketing is not set up to market to investors that want to buy a triplex and rent it out. Uh, so enabling this does, does respond to a market, to market realities.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments from the commission?
That's actually reassuring, uh, a bit because, um, I'm not looking at exactly where it is at one point. Yes, it's, it's on page four of that same attachment. Rather than an individual home buyer, you're marketing to a smaller group who would want to rent out a unit. Uh, you, you introduce that possibility as one of the benefits of our work here. That seemed to be suggesting that developers do want to market to people who want to rent part of their.
Yeah, no, it's the opposite. I mean, they're, they're used to marketing to the home buyer. And so that is what the middle housing land division further enables. Okay, are we good on land divisions? Anything else on that before we move on? Okay. So other recent updates, and I'll go through these fairly quickly and then pause occasionally for comments. Parking, I'll pause after parking, but then there'll be another list that I'll go through. So parking, so I could tell on faces in the discussion last time, there was still some hesitation that parking, that when required parking is put in garages, that the garages aren't going to be used for parking. Which like I say, is a, is a reality oftentimes. So, I, you know, we're not, we don't want to go too far in terms of having an inspection program or having signs posted everywhere. The project team kind of feels like that's too much, but having a requirement that, in the covenants, that, that, that the garage must be kept clear for parking purposes. So if it becomes a neighborhood issue, that, that owners association or other neighbors have, have leverage to, to address it and make sure that that parking space that's designated as a required parking space is actually being used for parking. Uh, the other item is, and to do this, I want to step back and just kind of imagine yourself a home designer, you know, going through the code to design, to draw out a site plan and put, put your house plan on a house. So they, you know, they look at the table and says, oh, one parking spot. They put one parking spot. They really don't think twice about it oftentimes. Uh, there's an assumption that that is the requirement, but also that, that that's the preference, right? Uh, that, uh, so putting language in there that just calls to their attention, you know, if, if there's room on your site to put in a second parking space, we'd prefer you to do that. Would, would tend to then, okay, yeah, I want to make the city happy, I'll, I'll do that. You know, I have room for it, I'll, I'll draw in that second space and, and design it and pave it and whatnot. So, so to make that clear in the table that while, uh, the state limits us to requiring one, we can certainly be made known that for larger units that, that we prefer to, uh, with the table also clearly stating that we cannot deny a permit if they choose to only put one space. But just encourage, uh, designers to be thoughtful about including a second space. about including a second space where, where they're able to. So that is the updates I had in regards to parking. We covered a lot of parking last time. So any comments on these parking updates?
All-star, I like the way you've finessed that. I think you've addressed our concerns about as much as you can. The wording's good to me.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the effort. I still struggle to see how much of an impact it's going to make on the ground. You know, I, I see covenants as, as a nice thought, but unrealistic in terms of the impact that they're going to have.
The market's the final arbiter here.
What was the motivation for the state to not require more than one?
I mean, it's, I mean, that gets into a lot of big policy pictures. I mean, first of all, the, it's, it's a waste of land to put too much parking and there's scarce land. The desire, the greenhouse gases and reduction of driving, that all plays into it. And just the fact that there's limited land and they'd rather house people than cars. And there, and you know, you're writing a code for a whole state and this was talked about at length in the rulemaking. But particularly urban areas, they want to have flexibility to be able to add these units. There's also a concern that, you know, that's a, understandably, a typical NIMBY response is what about the parking? So there's real fear that, you know, any parking requirement will be, regardless of whether or not it's needed or not, would be used as leverage to try to make, make additional housing infill unfeasible. So those are just some of the reasons that kind of in the rulemaking discussions. I don't know if you have anything to add, Miranda, of what discussions you've heard around this topic, but it's something, I mean, our current standards are also one, one space per unit, which again, I mean, from a reality, the market's typically built more than that where there's space. So I don't know if you have anything to add, Miranda?
Just a couple of other things I heard during those long discussions. Partly cost can add a lot to a project. Probably less so for maybe like a single family home. A lot of it is that loss of revenue of just the amount of space it's taking up that's not part of the house and part of what you're gaining there. And then a lot of it has to do with infill. So a lot of this bill is targeted towards infill or redevelopment in existing neighborhoods, particularly that may have been previously only zoned for single-family detached homes. When you're working within that space and on what can be smaller lots or just lots that you might be trying to move from one house to now two or three home units, there's not a lot of space. And so the more parking we require as a city, along with design standards like setbacks and some folks and, and the, what am I thinking about? The coverage, lot coverage standards. When you start putting all of those together and you're also requiring space for the parking or, or what might be a garage, it becomes infeasible then to build those additional units or more additional middle housing units. And a lot of this bill was about integrating diversity of housing, but also just about the fact that we have a housing shortage in the state and the need for housing. And so making more housing possible and feasible is important. And a lot of this bill was really targeted at infill and redevelopment opportunity, which is, I think, a prime driver of this parking standard. And yeah, I'll leave it at that.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Anything else on parking? So let's move to another topic that, you know, we haven't talked about at all. So let's cover this fairly briefly tonight. So, and this is an area where, again, I want to pause and really express gratitude for the, for the thoughtfulness that the commission has given to this, to this. Sometimes it seems a fairly minor detail, but it's an important, it's an important thing. So I wanted to step back and kind of what, as, from the project team's perspective, what we understood occurred. This is back in the February, March timeframe. Is so we held a meeting with Frog Pond developers and property owners. And there was a strong indication that, you know, kind of regardless of what, what happened with the code, that really they were moving forward with what their plan was, which was to build kind of their, they'd been looking for property to build single-family homes and it was the plan to move forward with that. There was concern that with all this effort, that we wouldn't see any additional middle housing in Frog Pond West besides maybe a couple of units that are currently required. So there was policy direction to ensure some additional level of middle housing in Frog Pond West. And as that was thought about, how can we do that? The idea of the requirement really came to the forefront. And 10% was landed on because that mirrored the 10% that's currently required in the small lot sub-district in, in Frog Pond West. So since that time, kind of some of the aspects of the code have, have gelled more and we understand, stand more exactly how this sort of requirement would function. Also, development has continued to come, come in at a healthy pace. We have one development under review now. We've had pre-applications on a couple of others indicating that they are most likely to be submitted prior to, to this code coming into effect, which really in the end left only about a quarter of the overall development or about 150 units where any requirement would actually apply to. So you'd end up 15, you know, 15 units being required. And when you, when you think that those would actually replace, probably replace seven single-family units, you're actually only talking about a required increase of about eight units. And also, so the thought is, okay, how can we get to at least that level? Likely more. Are there, now that we understand some of the mechanics of this a bit more, and also where could maybe some of those incentives or mechanisms actually lead to some of these developments that maybe have been plotted and brought into the city but not built? Could, could enable some of the middle housing or encourage middle housing on some of those additional lots? So we really looked at a new refined approach to, you know, continue to get this right because this is an important thing to get right. So the project team really looked at three, 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 a three-pronged approach here. I think a significant one, which we've alluded to already tonight, is the allowance of middle housing land divisions. I, I don't think the importance of that can be understated. That really does change the calculus with this. We heard from the, you know, part of that concern is, I mean, there's the constructability of it, that they're not really used to building this. Some of the home builders are, you know, they'd have to do some new designs. But that's not unsurmountable. There are home builders that, most home builders that have been active out there have built attached units in Wilsonville. But the, the bigger thing is the market, who they're marketing to. And so being able to build units, particularly we're talking about these duos and some, and some triplexes or three-unit townhouses on corners. So mainly these two-unit attached homes, that that is a market segment that is available at a price point that, you know, they're, that they, that it can be sold to these individual owners. So that's important. And also another thing, as, as we work through this and have looked at a number of these applications, there's, there's a provision in, in the zoning for Frog Pond West for lot size reduction. This particularly comes, is offered as an incentive when there's trees or other natural areas that need to be preserved, that they're able to, as necessary, reduce the, the lots to 80% of the minimum lot size in order to better preserve trees. We've seen that that is something that really catches the attention of property owners because what happened of the develop, because what happens is, you know, you get your table, you get your, your, you look at your table, your sub-district or your portion of your sub-district, you're allowed, let's say, 50 lots. But then you lay out your streets and you have to orient the streets such to go around a tree grove or to connect correctly to the next subdivision over. And so you end up with these kind of odd shaped or not perfectly shaped or perfectly dimensioned blocks. And so you're not able to fit all your lots at the minimum lot size into those blocks just because of the geometry and just the, all the things that go into site planning. The need to put in your, your above-ground stormwater features, things like that. And so developers start looking, okay, if I can like shrink a couple of these lots, have a reason to shrink a couple of these lots a bit, like then I can get one or two more. And so the ability to get one or two more lots in can be a strong incentive for them to put these lots. And so based on, on kind of that understanding and that, how that has been, that mechanism and the interest in such an incentive, the thought is to allow that also for, for middle housing. That, okay, we'll allow you to reduce some additional lots as long as you're, you're using it to put middle housing. Now, first I meant, well, you're putting more units on a smaller lot. But something I want to make sure you understand is, in doing that, we're not changing the required lot width or depth. Maybe you have just as wide of a lot, but it's a little shallower or something like that. So from, from a kind of an urban form, urban design standpoint, we wouldn't anticipate much difference. It's just one of the dimensions may, may be a little different, but still meet the minimum. So feel comfortable that, you know, from, from an aesthetic viewpoint, from the street perceived density, look and feel sort of thing, that you're not going to see a noticeable difference. But just as you're trying to put these, fit these squares into a not-square block, that this sort of flexibility can really be something that a developer really is interested in. The other component, which is important, is the fees, right? The scope and the amount of information and time and money we have right now, we're not able to do, get to that point where we can really create a new fee structure for Frog Pond West. But that is in the scope of the Frog Pond East and South work, which would apply more broadly. And so, and we anticipate there'll still be vacant lots in Frog Pond West at the point that those would be adopted likely later next year. So that is, so having that variable rates and reducing the cost of, of those units, it's another portion of this that, long-term, we do think would, would incentivize developers to strongly consider middle housing. And when you combine all these together, my professional opinion is you'd actually end up with more than that 15 for sure. I mean, right, I mean, I don't have a pure crystal ball to know for sure, but I mean, as I think through it and my experience working with developers and reviewing site plans out there and kind of how the market's working, is that, that this would, I mean, you don't get the guarantee of the requirement, but the end result is, is probably you have more. So that is the explanation there where the project team's thoughts are on this question that we've talked quite a bit about. So let's briefly go around and get your thoughts.
Who wants to go first?
You should go first.
I don't have any thoughts about this. I think these are good ideas.
Those are thoughts?
I have a thought.
Go ahead.
And that is that it just does not seem to make a lot of sense to crowd more units on a smaller lot. On the face of it, it just doesn't. Are there any limit, are there any, is there any limit on the number of reductions that is now a limit, now allowed for, say, the trees problem?
There, there's not a limit. It's as necessary. It's what the, what the rules say.
Would there be a limit on the number of reductions that would be permitted for single, for middle housing?
There wouldn't, but we also know that there's going to be still a propensity to build single-family and that we are hearing that that's, you know, the builder's plans out here. So we wouldn't anticipate that there'd be, you know, that you'd get all smaller lots, per se. And this would also generally be applying in the large lot sub-district. So you're talking, you know, 6,400 down from 8,000.
Why do we think that?
Based on feedback that we've gotten from developers, that there's still a strong market interest in building single-family out here.
No, I mean, the, the, these would happen on larger lots.
Because that's what's left.
I see. Okay. Talking the.
I mean, there's some medium areas.
Northwest and, and northeast corners.
Right, particularly the, the northwest corner. And there, there is some medium lots still in play too, but.
Okay, well, that mitigates my concern a bit.
But again, it's, it's lot sizes, you got to also think about lot width and depth.
Oh, I get the aesthetics and your point is well-taken there. Of course, having to sacrifice backyard space isn't real great either, but again, with the larger lots, there's maybe more give.
Yeah.
Is there a way you could incentivize differently to say, yes, you can reduce the lot size on lot B over here, but only if you put middle housing on one of these other normal-sized lots?
That's a possibility, that may, yeah.
So that would get a single-family.
Is that you don't have to necessarily, it's, it's, you, you could put it on a different lot. You can get that extra lot as long as you put the middle housing somewhere in the development.
I would go for that.
Okay, that's a good thought.
It's a good incentive.
So get it on the larger, then, rather than to try to shove it on the small?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's instead of the reduction incentive?
The reduction would be allowed, but on a single-family lot, not on the middle housing lot.
I, I would strongly support that.
Yeah, and I think that gets to what you were saying to Commissioner Greenfield is, you know, that would make it so you can't do 100% lot reduction because you have to put the middle housing somewhere on the full-size lot.
So you're really, you're really offering two incentives.
That's a good point.
Good. Everland?
So, yeah. My, my concern with this is there is a risk that we go with this approach and no middle housing is built. And we get nothing out of it. Whereas the other way, we do still at least get something. This way, we're hoping we get more, but there's no guarantee. And I'm, I'm concerned with that because seven units is still more than zero. And it's a start. And we don't have any guarantees with this. That's what I'm struggling with in terms.
Excuse me.
Understood. I think these extra lots, though, I mean, is a pretty strong incentive because we know that developers are after that. That they're not being able to, because of lot geometries, they're not able to maximize the amount of lots they have. And so it is, I mean, I can't imagine a developer not taking advantage of that, honestly.
So does it have to be one or the other? You can't be that and/or this? 10% or you can do this?
10% can also be a disincentive and push developers to try to get in prior to November as well. So there's that concern. That rather than if we work, if we kind of, rather than try to put up a dam, try to flow with the stream and work with them and where the market's heading, I think we'd have more success.
From my perspective, I mean, if we could put this in place now so that there was a larger opportunity in Frog Pond West, I'd be all for it because the probability then is you're going to get more development. But we're still, with the timing for this implementation, we're still looking. But we're still, with the timing for this implementation, we're still looking at only having a quarter of the overall Frog Pond West being applicable for this three-pronged approach.
And I'd have to talk to the developers more to understand them, but if they see this as a big benefit, particularly this lot size component, they may wait a few months.
Okay. I'd be interested to hear the results of that outreach.
Yeah, so see if, to see if, you know, if it's a 10% requirement, they may race to get it in versus if it's like, oh, I get something from it, they may, okay, I'll, I'll, I'll sit on this for a couple of months because I'm going to have more flexibility.
Are we also creating a model or precedent for East and South?
Yeah. No, that's yet to be determined. We really need to look at, because, I mean, the, the calculus for the, for the land use in, in East and South is going to be different. Because we're going to be allowing middle housing everywhere and be really thoughtful sub-district by sub-district about that.
This is not just allowing, but promoting.
Broadly allowing and really designing where it kind of pushes towards middle housing, especially in some of the areas, which is consistent with the area plan. So it's, it's too early to say that for sure, I would say.
Dan, would it be safe to say that, that Frog Pond West, the builders are, have been planning on building single-family? But Frog Pond East and South has been designed to assume that it's going to be denser development. And so that would be a different builder coming in to do that. You wouldn't see the same three, four builders from West moving over to East and South.
Or even if it is, they're making their, their, their offers, they're making their development plans based on a different product mix.
Yeah.
Are you okay now?
Good enough.
Everybody's all right, okay?
I can just share, I don't know if it's worth adding, but just my own observation with a lot of the development projects we see, is they do look at, particularly with Frog Pond West, we have that chart of like, here's your minimum and maximum lots. And every time we start talking on a project, it's, always starts from that maximum lot number. And we will spend sometimes three, four, five, six site plan iterations of that team trying to get to that maximum lot number. And so I do think that we spend a lot of time thinking about it because we want to make sure that the intent, that the planning commission, and so I do appreciate your hesitancy because we spent a lot of time internally talking about this over the last couple of months as we started hearing from more developers about what the likelihood of the requirement would actually look like. And does that actually meet the intent that the planning commission and the city council set out for with that requirement? And we had heartburn over it. And we talked a lot about, what do we see when we go into these meetings with the developers? What do we talk about? What oftentimes is their end game in terms of what they need at the bottom line? And they often assume that they're going to get that maximum number of lots, and that's what's at their financial bottom line in terms of what their assumptions are when they buy the property and then try to get the site plan through. And so from that perspective, that's why we landed on that incentive in a way of thinking, not just a financial incentive, but what can we put in the code that we know often is driving those conversations for the applicant? And so that's where we ended up landing on that. I don't know what it will result in. I don't know if that will actually pan out the way we hope it will, whether we will get any. There is risk involved in that. And so we appreciate your honesty and, and your discussion around that. But that is really for us, as we noodled over it and thought about, what do we bring back or do we just leave what we have? That's kind of where that conversation really stemmed from on the staff side before coming here tonight.
This is really not that much different than allowing additional maximum heights in a, in a densely urban...
Right.
Tower kind of environment if you add so many affordable units. You're, you're adding to the maximum potential development in order to carve some special units out of it. It makes perfect sense.
Yeah, and I would see if Joe has anything to add since I know he's spent a moment or two thinking about Frog Pond over the years.
Just a few moments.
It's a little bit of a six of one, half a dozen of another policy choice, I think is the simple way to say it. The 10% provides the, the intended guarantee, so to speak. The three-pronged approach tries to put together what the city is hearing from the development community and into, into the regulatory framework. So I don't have advice on which one is the best for the city. I think the Frog Pond West is, is not a model for East and South, even though Dan is correct that it's too early to tell, but there's, there's so many different dynamics for East and South that this discussion really is limited to, to West. So it's, it's a policy choice that I'd, I'd have to be on your side of the table to really express what I think is best for Wilsonville. It's just different trade-offs with each one. And, and the staff has very, kind of thoughtfully tried to accommodate what they're hearing in the outreach process and, and from those that are on the other side of the counter, so to speak.
Thanks, Joe.
One, one last thing, actually. The, I wouldn't discount the value of the 20% reduction in, in responding to site conditions like trees and slopes and, and other constraints. Those are good things that come back to the city. And so in terms of what is the benefit to, to the city of a, a part of this three-pronged approach? The retention of trees, the response, the orientation according to slope and so on as necessary, and connectivity, those are definitely good outcomes.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
Are ready to move on to a few other things. All moved through these quite quickly now. So responding to some additional comments, particularly we had a good letter prepared by Taylor Morrison, who's worked quite a bit in Wilsonville. So, but before I get to that, so one concern that staff had is, we're, we're bringing up all these new, and don't get, don't worry too much about this table. It's just for illustration purposes. This isn't going in the code. So, I mean, we have all these new design standards. And we have existing design standards for places like Frog Pond, Vilbois, and Old Town. And so we wanted to think thoroughly through, okay, how to, all these new design standards interact with, with those existing? Because sometimes they're different and they kind of apply on top of those. Other times, they conflict. And so you wouldn't want them to apply in the village zone or the residential neighborhood zone. So went through an exercise, took all of the new design standards, put it into a table and, you know, thought through, okay, do we want this to apply in the village zone, the RN zone, the old town zone, and other zones? So we went through that and in the end found out, it's actually a lot simpler than we thought. That there's only a few items that we don't want to apply. So it ended up being just two quick phrases. We didn't have to put a whole complicated table in the code. So it's just entry orientations, some items around windows, as well as some of the, the house plan or facade variety were the only things that really say, you know, these, these don't apply in the village zone and residential neighborhood zone. All the other new design standards do. So we got that clarified. One comment we did get is to better define the adjacent and opposite. Particularly adjacent is pretty straightforward, you know, it's next to it. When you start talking about opposite, especially opposite across, you know, a curvilinear street or a non-traditional cluster or something, it, it starts getting complicated. So we got comments that that wasn't clear enough. And so we ended up kind of breaking these different components of adjacent and opposite up to better define them so it's clear. And it even included a, a picture, a good example, this is actually from a street in Vilbois, that shows how you would determine what is directly across structure and what needs to meet the standards. So with, with this update, feel comfortable that these, this, these requirements for facade variety are, are, are going to be clear and, and usable by both the development community and staff. Another area that both was brought up by developers and staff and the project team have been thinking and double-thinking about that, did we get this right, is about the percentage of, of facades that are covered by windows. So the model code-based language does not really differentiate between front, rear, and side public-facing facades very well. And certainly, the more, typically, the more windows you have, particularly on a facade such as a side facade that has a lot of kind of utility space, it starts becoming costly. And so that is a concern. It was, as we thought through this, we remember that this was a topic, I don't know if any of you recall, that it was extensively examined with the Frog Pond West master plan. And really, there was a lot of study and thought put into it. And so based on that, really, what we, the end recommendation is to adopt language from Frog Pond West to allow for certain percentages. And, which includes only requiring 5% for side facades. Front or rear facades vary from 10 to 15% based on the number of stories and the amount of other architectural features. So this is actually, we've reviewed enough house plans now in, in Frog Pond West that this, this approach has worked really well. Staff feels, and feels is worth expanding in both for usability and also to be consistent across the city where we are applying when, glazing or window percentage requirements. Another comment that we got during the public forum and is a good point is that there's, there's a couple, both in the village zone as well as the old town neighborhood zone, where there's alley, alley-loaded parking space, that it's only required to be 16 feet deep where the standard parking space is nine by 18. So expanding that by two feet to ensure if you have your required parking space as a surface parking spot in the alley, that it, there's not a conflict there that is going to meet that minimum dimension to be a required parking space. So I will then ask, any thoughts on these updates, including the applicability of design standards, the adjacent and opposite language changes, window percentages, or the alley-length change?
Who wants to go first?
This might be a first. I have no comment.
I'm confused about the percentages here. Five, 10, or 15%? 10 or 15%? I mean, yes, 10 or 15% on the back and/or front?
Yeah. So the side it would be 5%. The front, where a rear faces a street such as a double-loaded lot or a green space or an open space, it's treated like a front facade in terms of the architectural detail. That's how it is in Frog Pond. And so that'd be...
Are there some areas where the standard, where the minimum is 15% on the side?
No. So the model code doesn't differentiate. I mean, whether you have a front side or rear-facing a street, it'd be 15%. And so this allows the side to be reduced in all cases to 5%. And, and it gets to allowing that in a bit of a roundabout way because we need to make sure we're applying standards equally across all housing types per the state law. So, so you end up being a little indirect in getting that allowance to 5%, but it, it works. So in other words, the model code says it's 15%, but in all cases for the side, there's an exemption to take it down for 5%.
So would it be fair to say that 5% is pretty much a standard in Wilsonville?
For a side?
For sides?
Yes. Which makes sense because oftentimes that's where you have your stairs and storage space. And so it's, it's pretty difficult to put windows in some side facades.
Well, I'm happy to say I live in a house which exceeds that minimum. And of course, townhouses have no side exposure.
Yeah, we don't like windows in those sides.
No.
Building code doesn't like that, for sure.
But that's an argument against townhouses, in my opinion. Goes with the style.
Anyone else?
Okay.
Next?
Okay, so next, both in, in our, I appreciate these comments. They're very timely and important, about ADA access and visibility. So we've looked at this, this one, this one's difficult because it really gets into the building code a lot. And I, I had a conversation with the building official and he's explained a bit more to me that really for residential generally, there isn't like a ratio like there is for commercial and industrial. It's really kind of, if it's a designated unit, then, then it, then it has the ADA parking space. That said, there are, we looked around and we're aware of some standards that, that the city of Portland has developed. They call them their visibility standards, which they apply to a percentage of, of essentially infill housing, kind of middle housing, which I know they're going to have to address that as part of their compliance. So that's, so really what, what these standards do is it ensures that there's an accessible entrance and doors, that there's a ground-level bathroom that's accessible. And, and their standards specifically define what that is. And also that there is an accessible living area that's big enough to really move a wheelchair around. And, and so that, and, you know, and I have family members that have, that have challenges visiting me because of some of these visibility issues. And so, you know, I, I really, personally, I mean, this is really important to me as But it gets difficult. It really needs more study because of the understanding of the cost increases and how it relates to building code. And, and the fact that how we have to, we can't pick and choose which housing types these sort of standards apply to. Or it doesn't make sense to kind of arbitrarily choose a percentage right now without more study. And if we apply it everywhere, that, to every unit, we really need to think about that and what cost and other implications that has. So really, with all that, the recommendation is, while it's important, is that we really do need more time to think through it. And there, I think there's space to do that as part of the Frog Pond East and South work. And there'll be some limited kind of city-wide code updates, I anticipate, associated with that. And so it's something that could be wrapped into that work later next year. But just with the timeframe and the amount of study and engagement and understanding that we needed to do this successfully, we don't feel that that's feasible as part of this project. this project. So welcome, any thoughts on this topic?
I think it's important to continue pursuing it and it'd be very interesting, interested to see what the stakeholders you engage with have to say about it.
Yeah, I also just want to comment as a disabled person that it's more than just a wheelchair. A lot of it is just accessibility to living in a place.
Yeah, so there's we definitely want to engage in adopting something like this, a broad array of
Needs.
Of needs. And understand them. And how, and really understand what, because, I mean, there is quite a bit of work on universal design and better understand the concepts around universal design and how that, those can be brought into our local standards.
I'll be more than happy to share with you directly some of the challenges I have faced that most people wouldn't even, they would think about it because it isn't an issue for them, like the weight of a door. Who thinks about that? But it's important to someone who's limited.
Right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's getting late. It's not as late as I fear we might go tonight, but that's great. So, you know, you had about 300 pages of code and I know we've worked on a lot, but wanted to give space if you have any comments and thoughts on other components that we haven't already talked about tonight or things you've noticed or things that are still on your mind that kind of maybe don't seem settled to you. Happy to take note of those or discuss those. I'd also offer, as always, I'm happy to meet with you one-on-one to discuss any of this in more detail as we kind of get this finalized, really looking to get this, get a hearings-ready version within the next kind of week and a half, two weeks.
Because our next commission meeting is going to have a hearing on this.
Correct.
Been a marathon.
Good job.
And then take a deep breath and we'll start another marathon.
Well, I suppose if you haven't quite finished the 300 pages, in the next week or week and a half, do so so that when the public hearing comes, you know all the answers. So Dan doesn't have to answer all of them all by himself.
I think he'd prefer to answer them.
I mean, at the public forum, you guys answered questions really well.
Very good. Thank you.
Right, so of course I'm available and thank you again for your time and thoughtfulness on this. It's been a fun project to work on with you.
It has been fun. That's definitely, and thank you, Joe, and the rest of the people who helped us kind of work through all of these. And Kate, yes, and it's been a long journey.
Kate and Joe, any last thoughts tonight?
It's a very comprehensive package, obviously, but, you know, I think the bigger-picture goals of beyond meeting state law, but trying to diversify the housing opportunities in Wilsonville. If you can get through the details of the 300 pages, those opportunities are there. So nothing's perfect, of course, but I think from my perspective, the city is putting in place the path to at least provide the opportunity for more housing. And with that, actually, the other thing I'll say is I'll compliment the two-person team of Kate and Dan on really moving through the details and providing options for you. And all three of us have tried to frame up the questions that you have worked through over the months, so.
Thank you much. Very good. City council action minutes were included in the packet. Does anybody have any questions from staff on what happened at the council? Doesn't appear. The work program was also included. As I mentioned, we have public hearing on middle housing next meeting as well as town center streetscape plan
Correct.
Hearing. And we are going to work on the Urban Forestry Management Plan work session. So next meeting is going to be a long one, probably. Or no?
And assume to be in person, I assume.
Or do we know?
I would say that things are changing by the moment. I know there was even new announcement today by the governor. So at this point, I don't know that we have, I don't have anything new to share at this point this evening. I don't know if there's actually one way to assume or not at this point, but we will let you know and be in touch if any policies change.
Well, I could tell you, with Zoom cutting in and out, it's very difficult to sometimes follow the conversation and discussion in order to share it. In person is definitely easier that way. But I also understand that if Delta becomes an issue, then, you know, we don't want to be endangering. Anybody?
Did we have any major problems with the forum in terms of the technology?
In terms of the public forum that we had for the middle housing project?
Right.
No, I don't think there were any issues with the technology.
We had pretty good public participation in that, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was the last commission meeting. I got knocked off Zoom six times. Kept coming back.
That's right, you were.
But it takes like two minutes for it to come back. You've missed, you know, a whole bunch of stuff. So potentially, but.
I think you need a better internet connection.
That's what I was going to say.
Others were having the same problem. It wasn't only me, so that gave me some more feeling.
My problem was that my son started vacuuming while he was running his air conditioner and it shut down my router. So just don't vacuum during the meeting. A breaker tripped.
I will have that note on my computer. Then we have some update, I guess, from Commissioners Gallagher and Dzyszkiewicz, who went to League of Oregon Cities training on city planning in Oregon.
We did. So three-day class.
Three-day class?
Yeah, just for a couple hours a day.
Three mornings.
Was it online?
Yes. A lot of it was a lot more technical than I was anticipating, something that maybe people on the Development Review Board might get a lot of, just because there's a lot of smaller towns where it's kind of a combined effort. But it stressed thoughtful planning that's credible and defensible to your community. And I thought it was great. Anything you want to add?
Well, along with what I mentioned earlier in the meeting, one of the things that I got from it is I really didn't know how Oregon as a state is really a state of extremely small towns. And it only made me very grateful that I, because I grew up in a really small town. So I felt very comfortable with a lot of the issues that were brought up, but it also made me appreciate how incredibly organized and thoughtful Wilsonville is. And so, you know, I think when you have an opportunity to experience information as well as feedback from, you know, I don't know, 75, there were 125 people, something like that, that were on, that were in these meetings and you heard all these comments that were going on, really gives you a perspective of where you are. And we're very fortunate here. We really are. I can, I really value what we're doing.
Well, thank you. I appreciate both of you offering a little bit of feedback on that. I know that the host was, was it the League of Oregon Cities?
John.
They try to provide useful trainings in these regards. We know that it's volunteers, community members, some of whom have history and background in planning, some who don't, most who don't. And so they try to provide these types of trainings. I know they've done different ones over the years and I'm glad we could offer it to you and I'm really happy to hear that it was useful and helpful. That's, we know that there's kind of a lot of information to absorb as you transition into this service position, so I'm glad that they were able to offer you something.
I think one of the most valuable pieces, you know, you get little gems, little kernels of things as you sit for six hours and listen to a lot of different things. But one of the things that I think came out that was one of the major points was the difference between communities that do not anticipate either growth or opportunity and only when it's presented to them are they, do they meet and go, oh, we have an opportunity, what shall we do with it? Versus communities like ours that are planning thoughtfully ahead so that when the opportunity comes, they can jump on it. And that for me was, you know what I'm talking about with Cascade? That was really, you know, that just sort of coalesces everything that you're listening to and you go, aha. And also the whole process of planning, coming up with an idea, working it through like we do, making decisions, and then when you get done, the final step that most people in life forget about, which is when you've finished a process, to sit down and go, what did we learn from this? Where could we have done something better? And that's such an important little piece. And that was stressed too. And those were the two takeaways I got from the six hours.
Yeah, and he was extremely knowledgeable and had worked all over the state, which was just fascinating for me, just to learn about all the different things that are going on in the different cities and how they're tackling growth and planning and just thought that was great.
Very good. My favorite ad from some decades ago is from BMW that said, "We wanted to predict the future, so we decided to create it." Because I think in the 90s, they had an ad to that effect. The value of design and planning. Any announcements from staff, the department? No?
Not that I have now, no.
Okay.
All right.
Well, in that case, we are ready to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn. A second.
We have a move and we have a second. We are adjourning at 8:48.